All right, it is six o'clock according to... Oh, are you all set, Tony? Is that, is that us?
You're on live now.
No.
Okay. Okay. There we are. Good evening, everyone. It is now six P. M. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October sixteenth meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. I'd like to first open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as usual, the board is just coming out of a paperwork review, and I will first list the consent items that we've reviewed. Number one was a meeting of minutes of the meeting of September twenty-fifth. The accounts payable manifest of October third of six hundred twenty-two thousand five eighteen twenty-three, October tenth of sixty-eight thousand three sixty-two ninety-nine, and October seventeenth of seventy-two thousand two sixteen sixty-seven. Payroll manifests, ten-five was fifty-six thousand three forty-eight fifty-seven, ten-twelve was sixty-one thousand four eighty-five forty-seven, and ten-nineteen fifty-four thousand six eighty-four seventy-nine. We had the tax collector reconciliation for September, town clerk reconciliation for September. We had six abatements. We had a tax warrant, twenty-seventeen dash zero-two for ten thousand two sixty-eight, ten million two hundred sixty-eight thousand six hundred ten dollars. And we had a twenty-seventeen supplemental tax warrant for fifteen thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars. Are there any items that any member would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Moved to approve by Mr. Brunel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. Mr. Bark is excused tonight. He's on a little vacation. Are there any other items that members would like added to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Weren't we gonna talk about the stop sign? The intersection?
Okay.
At Lansing, uh...
Yep.
Century?
Yeah, okay.
Would like to add that back on.
Okay. Public input will occur no earlier than six-thirty P. M. We will go on to the first order of business, which is the fire station building committee. Mr. Brown?
Okay, what I did was prepared, sort of like a little committee charge for the fire station building committee. The intent of this committee, at this point, I figured I'd just take it in just the first step, which be to put the committee together officially by this board and have it work on everything leading up to the, hopefully, a bond vote for the fire station. So directly working with the construction manager and the architect to make sure that the, the design plans, permits, cost estimates are all in place in a timely manner. I know there'll be some discussions about fit-up of the building. We've had some other discussions or some input from public about, you know, taking a look at backup power generations and, you know, other site conditions. So they'd be looking at that. Also, I put into this committee charge, just to point out to the board of selectmen, to see if you're in agreement if this would be appropriate or not, to maybe charge this committee with initiating the discussion about looking into alternative uses of the existing fire station, trying to see if there's ways, you know, let this committee come up with some possible solutions. The committee, as I have it written up, would dissolve the end of March. At that point in time, I think, you know, the selectmen could decide to continue with the committee and, you know, change the purpose and expand the scope to oversee the construction part.
Press, I think your idea of seeking alternatives for the old building is a good idea since a couple of members of the budget committee were interested in having that discussion, so I think that's a great idea. Discussion, members of the board.
So why wouldn't the fire station still fall under the jurisdiction of the fire department? If they had a use for it?
Well, that would...
It, it certainly could.
Could be. But I know that, I know the budget committee have had some members, not the committee as a whole, but I've had some members, did make some comments about, you know, identifying a reuse plan. Brent and I have had some meetings with budget committee chair and school officials and just really trying to coordinate some of the two thousand eighteen capital projects, and that discussions occurred there, so we continue to get some, receive feedback about looking into possible reuse. And maybe it's a hundred percent fire station. I, I don't know.
Just to get everything out on the table, all the ideas?
Well, the only reason that I say that is because we went through, with the engineer for the fire station, that went through a study to try to see if we could refurbish the building. If we repurpose that use, we're gonna have to put all of those different things into it to bring it up to code.
Oh, but the, the thing is, no, that isn't the intent. The intent is to just see if there is something that can, that that building can be used for without having to do it.
Well, I think that that would...
Storage, like, in, in a garage?
The reason why I say that is because I think what they're looking for is a definition of repurpose of the building so that they have a reason why we need, or what we can do with it.
Yeah.
And I think that they may be barking up the wrong tree because you might have to put two hundred thousand dollars into that building to keep it.
Oh, yeah.
And repurpose it for another use.
Because it does not meet code.
So you can only use it as, like, an auxiliary fire station as it is today, or you'd have to bring it up to code.
And, and this is what the discussions of the committee would like to have and bring forward.
We couldn't usually take this stuff out of the old town hall and bring it into the sub-districtment? As long as there's nobody, if there's no inhabitants in there, there's no people, you know, working in there normally.
Well, did, did we...
I would think cold storage.
Certainly, certainly, all of these...
We were told a repurpose would mean the building had to go up to code.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's how the repurpose was around. If we did any modifications to the building, expanding it, it would have to meet code.
If you change, I think if the proposed use was to, for a continued fire station, then you probably would have to meet certain codes. If the proposed use is storage, then maybe, yes, there's certain codes that need to be met. Maybe with...
I think if you even change that to storage...
The cost is huge.
You gotta rip the set of stairs out that goes upstairs because you'd still have to comply with ADA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is what they're gonna bring forward.
For public access.
Personally, tear it down.
That may be, that may be one of the options they look at.
Hate to say it. I mean, it's got history, but the point is, is that it opens it up for more liability. It's a problem.
Do you, I, I think for the people out there, I'd like to read this, okay? Okay with members?
Yep.
Um, "The Town of Litchfield, New Hampshire Fire Station Building Committee. The purpose, the Litchfield Board of Selectmen hereby establishes the Fire Station Building Committee to ensure that designed construction plans and construction contracts for a new fire station building, as approved by Article thirteen on March fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, are completed and ready for ballot vote on March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen. The membership of the committee will consist of six members as follows. Troy Brown, Town Administrator, Frank Freitzel, the Fire Chief, Doug Nickel, the Deputy Fire Chief, Kevin Lynch, the Inspector, Thomas Young, Renee Theroe, and Rich LaSalle as citizen representatives. Responsibilities as listed here. Number one, conduct all meetings in accordance with New Hampshire's right to no law, RSA ninety-one A. Number two, report directly to the Board of Selectmen to provide project updates and report. Number three, provide recommendations and review of final building and site plans. Number four, provide recommendations and review of interior furnishings and facility equipment. Number five, coordinate with project architect, engineer, and construction manager to ensure all design work, cost estimates, and permits are completed prior to bond vote. Number six, promote the project at special meetings, budget committees, websites, LCTV, local media, et cetera. Number seven, identify alternate uses for the current fire station building. Number eight committees, the committee's work will be complete after the bond vote on March thirteenth, twenty-eighteen, at which time the Board of Selectmen may expand the purpose and responsibility of said committee." Comments? Questions? Okay, is there a motion to accept or to establish this, the committee as written?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you.
And then, as a follow-up, once the, now that we've created the committee, I guess officially, we, we have appointment forms, so for Thomas Young, Renee, and Rich, I'm not sure if you want to make...
Right, they're in, yep.
Yeah, we sent this.
Okay. Thank you. Item two, unanticipated funds, RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B. We have received two hundred fifty dollars from Salesforce on behalf of David Conti for the Justin Bissett Memorial Baseball Complex. And B, we've received one thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars from Marilyn Jewett for thirty flagpole kits. Mr. Brown?
Okay.
Do we need to ex, vote to accept this?
That's right. We, so no, because the, the dollar amount is less than ten thousand, there's no requirement for public hearing. But this is placed on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen to accept. I will let you know that the flagpole sets, I've been working with Marilyn Jewett all summer, and we finally were able to purchase sets that met the requirements of B S and H. And Jack Pinciero, Dave Mellon will be working this Friday, I believe, as we agreed this Friday, putting on the brackets on the poles and installing the flags. So we'll be looking at, displaying the flags right up until Veterans Day and take them down a few days after, so...
Nice.
And the plan is that we would, the, the flags that we purchased, you know, they're not to be displayed, you know, from spring to fall. We're gonna be putting them up for Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day for about, you know, a week, week and a half at a time. And, and then we're hopeful that we should be able to, you know, they should last a good five to eight years. It'll depend on weather conditions and everything.
Excellent.
How far does thirty flagpoles get us? That's a lot, that's a lot of...
It's getting you, Jack's already scouted it out. You're getting fifteen poles?
How long is thirty?
Figured it out. We have thirty. So I took and put fifteen south and fifteen north of the fire station using the fire station. So it brings it up to the barn, the old barn on three A, and all the way down to Pinecrest. I was hoping I'd have enough to go, but there's only a few. And maybe a little, a little bit up, uh, Pinecrest towards, you know, the middle school because the parade comes...
You could probably scoop a couple away from the barn side.
The what?
The north side.
Well, I think we can.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
Because I, there's brackets there already on a couple of those poles, but I don't know, I've seen flags there, but I think it's the guy that sells the apples.
Yeah, because we, those aren't ours.
So, you know, we'll, we'll do whatever we can and make it look great.
Great. Okay, is there a motion to accept the unanticipated funds?
I'll make a motion that we accept the funds as read.
Motion by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion.
The only discussion I have is to take them up and down. Would you really put them up for Memorial Day and take them down and then put them back up for the Fourth of July? You wouldn't just leave them up for the month?
Say, wear and tear.
We'll take a look at it. We wanna see what, what's...
I would think that it would, I, I don't know how long it will take to put them up once the brackets are up, but I think it's probably four hours that you don't have to waste.
And if you need help reaching them, Jack, call me.
Hey, how, yeah, how are you bringing them up and down? You, we don't have a cherry picker?
Use a dump truck.
Oh, okay.
So if you stand around the headboard, you'll be able to, before you move, you'll get back down into the truck and move again.
Okay.
Would it be easier to rent a bucket truck?
Costlier.
Or a lift?
Yeah, I don't think you'd need one.
So you're gonna have Dave drive and you'll be on the...
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain?
Do I abstain? Because it is money for my project that I'm working on.
Sure.
Okay, I abstain.
Okay. Motion carries three zero one.
I don't know if that was the right thing to do, but...
I wouldn't have an issue, but just, I'm thinking...
If that two hundred and fifty dollars sways you, your decisions in any way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, now, we could buy white bases or used bases. Brand new or used?
Okay. Um, Mr. Pinciero, come, come join us at the mic. Tractor rental, Mr. Brown?
All right, so the department has always rented a tractor with a flare mower or, you know...
Boom mower.
Boom mower, for forty, for one week of the year. And last year, when we went to rent the piece of equipment from H. P. Fairfield, we, they, one of the things they require is a contract that we sign and approve an insurance certificate. Because we changed from LGC Property Li- Liability Trust to Primex for property liability insurance coverage, Primex was our new insurance provider and had asked before they issued the insurance certificate if they could review a copy of the contract that Howard P. Fairfield wanted the town to sign. So they reviewed the contract, and as you can see, there's some, there's two PDFs that are attached to this. One is some comments from Primex, and the other one is comments from our legal counsel. Primex had contacted me and said, "Want you to be aware, we can issue the insurance certificate. However, there's a couple of areas here we're very concerned about. We're not your legal counsel. We just want to bring it to your attention." And there are some things here that, you know, we provide coverage for, but our cap is not at the level they're requesting, and some things simply are not insured. But again, we think you should consult with legal counsel. So we, we took that advice and we consulted with Laura, Inspector Morgan. And she, you know, called me and said, "Whatever you do, Troy, don't sign the contract." And I will come up with some language that you can give Howard, Howard P. Fairfield for suggestions that they could make some changes to their contract. I said, "Okay." So we submit that to Howard P. Fairfield, and, you know, we're just dealing with the local manager who thought, "Yeah, this wouldn't be a big problem," but as he starts to work with people above him, the feedback he got was that this is the standard contract that they use. They recently just hired their own legal counsel to revise the contract, and they're not making any changes or modifications to it. So Jack and I were like, it was late in the, you know, it was kind of late last fall when this happened. We were, Jack had heard that another supplier that he works with was looking at renting tractors this year. So we thought we'd wait and see what, if that, if they offered the equipment and we could take a look at their contract. Well, that never did turn out, so we're in this position now where we've gone two years without doing our roadside mowing. There's, looking ahead, I mean, there's nothing that Howard P. Fairfield is going to do to change their contract language. And we're also aware that when we talked to Howard P. Fairfield, there's, they rattled off like fifteen, twenty towns.
All of Southern New Hampshire uses that contract.
Renting the, the tractor. And, um, so I just think, you know, in years of experience, I know that sometimes you can get into a situation like this when lawyers are involved, insurance companies involved, and, and even though they're doing their job, sometimes you have no other alternative but to go ahead and go against their request. But Jack and I, obviously, we're not going to do, take that action without discussing this with you and, you know, bringing it to your attention about the predicament we're in.
So, so everybody else has Primex?
Not everyone else. They have...
Although, there are other towns that have Primex.
There's other towns that do.
And they're renting from Fairfield. And, and we're...
I don't know who they rent from, but they, you know, I mean, there's towns that rent from Howard P. Fairfield. I don't know what they have for insurance.
If, if, knowing Primex, if they had, if they have Primex, they're gonna get the same answer...
Oh, sure.
On their insurance. I have a, if our attorney said, "Do not sign that under any circumstance," how could we in conscience subject a town to that liability?
Can I just put my two cents in? I've read the, I read the, her back, her response back. Troy shared that with me today. And it seems to me, and I'm not questioning an attorney, I'm not that silly, but it seems to be more about issues that could happen to this tractor that are outside the warranty. In other words, if you take that boom and you beat it against a tree and it falls apart, you're liable. Period.
I understand.
But if you blow the engine for no oil in it, you're liable because there is an oil maintenance sheet that comes with that tractor. And I think she's misinterpreting what they're saying in that.
But the problem is, Jack, we have two of our agencies that are not recommending it. One is our insurance carrier, and the second is our attorney. How can we...
Well, I'm not arguing the point. I'm just saying that I, I'm just trying to point out what I think has happened.
Yeah.
Is that...
But in any event, we can't second...
Oh, no, I, I, I can't argue that.
If we were to second guess them, I, I...
So here's the question. What are we, the fact we haven't done roads, roadside, mowing on the road sides for two years, what's the liability from a safety perspective if we're not getting it done?
I don't, I don't think, I, we, we could, we could certainly find that out, but I don't know that there isn't.
Let's, let's take a step back. We're doing roadside mowing.
Oh, we're not, no.
Not at all?
No.
Not even the bike path?
Yeah, I mean, we have nothing, oh, the bike path, we mow, yeah. And the other side, the opposite side, I've been mowing the Kubota.
But Jack, couldn't, at, at the intersections, if there were trees and stuff, couldn't we just cut them down with, like, chainsaws or something?
Of course, you can go out there, yeah.
Yeah, you know, on, on the problem intersections?
Brent can go out there.
No, I did that on Lance Ave. I cut that whole corner and the opposite side too. I mean, you know, how many corners there are that need to be maintained? I, it's impossible for one person to go out and maintain all of this.
My question is back to, I'm confused, reading her, reading her comments, I, lying with you, she seemed to be focused on we damaged the equipment, not the, not the equipment damaging somebody else's, somebody else's property.
Right.
So what was it? Is it, she's worried about us blowing the tractor up and us being liable for the cost of the tractor? That's not a lot of money.
I think that's more or less what she implied. That's what I got out of it.
Whether, whether the engine blows up, whether, um, we're just responsible for is her take on it. So, in other words, if Jack ran the tractor low on oil and he blows the engine, we're responsible for it.
Right, exactly.
If the engine blows and...
And I've kept the maintenance records on. Then they're liable.
H. P. Fairfield's saying, "We're still responsible for it."
But, right, and the problem is, Primex is saying there's an issue.
So they would, you know, in that case, they would, they would probably, they would deny the coverage.
Correct, so we'd be left...
And then we were up, you know, defending ourselves.
And I, and I didn't know, you know, I mean, I had forgotten that, um...
We changed insurance companies, so, I mean, every year the insurance...
Because for years, we've rented that with no problem or no issue at all.
Of course, every, every year that goes by, we get more litigious anyway, and there are people that wanna, think the towns have deep pockets and... I, I absolutely, I, I understand your, your...
Dilemma.
Yeah, but as, as a selectman, I, I couldn't in conscience vote against both our insurance carrier or...
I don't think we're asking that. We're not looking for you to, to do, I'm not anyway, and I'm sure Troy would never do that. Is, we're looking for some type of suggestion for what we can do.
Mr. Perry?
Hire an outside company.
That's, that's the only option.
Right.
Not available.
How can it not be available? Somebody's got to do it.
They're not available. They won't, there's one company I know of in Keene, I called the guy, and another one in Pauls. Those two I called. Both of them said, "No, we don't go that far."
How about the state? They have these tractors that they're all...
I went over to District Five and they, they thought, they laughed at me.
The state just did.
Jack, what about, what about Hudson? They own a Tiger mower. It's the same thing.
I don't know. I have, I think he has, but somebody else has one too and down.
Would, I know Londonderry has one.
They're not gonna loan it there, though.
Well, no, but I mean, could...
No, no, say, could, would we, could we pay them to...
Yeah, Hudson or Londonderry?
To do the problem intersection?
Maybe we could even ask them to do it. I don't know. How do you, no more about Londonderry than I do.
See, these Tiger mowers that he's talking about, that, you know, Tiger is like the primary brand. These things just like, I mean, he could get the whole town done in like days, whereas if he did everything by hand, you're looking at, you know, weeks, months.
I used to do it in forty hours.
We, we just have a, a legal...
No, no, I get it, but I mean, if we could find somebody to do it for us, that's, that's a huge savings.
If it's been a little while, it might take a little longer.
A little longer, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
King...
I think we're just looking for suggestions. I am, I am...
I wanted to bring it to your attention, too.
I saw the tractor coming down Corning, uh, Litchfield Road that Londonderry has.
Did three A today.
Yeah, no, no, but I mean, the town of Londonderry has, they're...
That was a state.
No, no, not on Litchfield Road, it wasn't.
On Corning Road, I mean, over here?
No, it, this was a while ago. Coming over, um, Litchfield Road, they were doing all the town roads in Londonderry.
Oh, I don't know. State's doing, did three A today.
Right.
The Hillcrest. I mean, they're, they've been around for, what, a week? Just about.
Hard to believe they're on anymore out there to rent. It's weird. Yeah, I just think it's weird.
You know who used to rent them to, and I got them one year, was MP Tractor.
Oh, and they don't do it anymore? MB Tractor?
And Plastica?
They told me they don't do it anymore, but I have seen ads where they say they rent them, so, you know.
Double check. They have a good website with their, um...
But...
My girl, I read...
It is a dilemma.
Bobcat Place, the Bobcat Place, I want them to, is not big enough, probably.
Troy, could you work with Jack and maybe see if mutual aid from towns that do have them around us that could help us out?
Looking at mutual aid, we could, you know, look into other, just, just keep asking. But we wanted to at least bring it to your attention to know that, because I'm getting concerned, we missed two years of roadside mowing.
We have a tractor. The front, the front-end loader?
A nine twenty-four. I mean, a regular backhoe or the big nine twenty-four?
I was gonna say the one that we have the lease agreement on. I was, I thought it was a front-end loader. The one that they use down at the dump. Maybe it is a backhoe.
Those kids do, not a backhoe.
Couldn't it, could we buy one and hook it onto that?
Yeah.
What are they costing about?
Need the car to wait for them.
No idea. I have to look into it, but I know they're available. I mean, we have the hydraulics on them already, so it's not...
Maybe that's an option. Because by the time we pay somebody to do it twice, maybe we bought the, the machine itself.
Plus twenty-seven hundred dollars to have it done, right? Twenty-seven nine hundred and ninety?
To rent it?
So, yeah, to rent.
Forty hundred.
But I was saying, if we were gonna pay somebody else to do it, say we were gonna pay somebody to do the town?
Yeah.
And they're gonna spend a week in town going around doing it, what would they charge?
Oh, my God.
Would that be comparable to the cost of purchasing a piece of equipment?
I would think so.
What do you think it costs?
At least if you pay back, it was a couple of years.
Well, this, this thing sells for, what did it say?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Tractor and everything?
Hundred and seventy-five.
We were to buy one like theirs, it'd be a hundred and twenty-five grand or something?
One seventy-five.
Yeah, but that's with the tractor.
Yeah. So this is probably twenty-five grand.
Well, how about if we look, how about if we get concrete prices and, in the interim, see if Londonderry might do a couple of our intersections for us on mutual aid type of deal?
Yeah, MB doesn't have anything on their website anymore with, uh, that type of mower.
What are you looking at?
On their rental fleet.
MB?
Yeah, MB.
I, I knew they had stopped. I don't know why.
They have everything. They usually...
There is, there is somebody in town that does have one. I might be able to approach them.
Troy, we used all the impact fees already for the highway department, didn't we?
Yep.
Yeah.
Be gone. When, next week, they're gonna do Pedro. Be gone, one, next week they're gonna do Pedro. And that north end of Albuquerque is, should be done. I talked to him today, so.
All right, well, can you guys work together, maybe come up with something that?
We have been, I mean. It's, we're both racking our brains, kind of finding, sitting.
So, do we reach out to London Dairy, see what they, if they would help, or Hudson, cause I know that they have one or use one.
I, I don't know if Hudson has one.
Well, when I drive down, I, I drive by Robinson Pond all the time, they do it every year.
Yeah. Oh, then they have one of their own.
So.
They have a lot of equipment that.
Try those two avenues, can you get pricing on what it would cost to purchase one?
All right, I'll do that. Okay.
Well, boom mowers, um, Tri County Contractor Supply out in Springfield has them.
No price on them, all right?
No, nothing, but it's a company that I've dealt with before, and unfortunately they're on Springfield, but.
Doesn't matter, trouble is that they can't, to get that to Springfield's a couple of grand.
Don't get it all fitted up for it, yeah.
It's so heavy, it's, it takes a flatbed to move it.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna, you know, some serious money. Plus we beg.
What, to purchase one and bring it in?
No, they wouldn't, we'd have to send it to their place to have it put on. That's the only trouble with these things, that you buy accessories to them. Like Caterpillar probably has that, right? Because that's a cat, more than likely, they have.
Isn't that a John Deere that we have, that, that backhoe?
No.
No, it's a cat.
It's a cat.
Oh, cat, yeah, everything we have is a cat, though. And that's nothing, make a phone call.
And they can't, they can't set it up down here on site?
Oh, yeah, no, they, no, Caterpillar, we just drive it right up to their plant, let them put it on, if they had it. But I know they have it.
Let's see what it costs.
All right.
I can do that, yeah.
And I noticed that, uh.
I didn't know you could do it to a backhoe.
Over thirty years, it's not a big monstrous thing, I mean, it's, it's a arm with hydraulics and a mower deck on it.
I was gonna say, the, the arm is twice the size of the mower deck.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's articulate, yeah, right. Okay, and I noticed that, uh, people in town should be, um, happy that you are very well prepared, ready for winter, I noticed.
Yes, I am, yeah, we have all the trucks ready, plows, wings, sanders, everything's been checked out, tested.
Yeah? Notice that.
We did get a, uh, a new sander for, uh, yeah, control for one of the state sanders that we had an issue with all year last year. And, uh, it'll be movable, it'll go with the truck, whatever truck we have. So, it's, uh, yeah, it's been a, been an interesting fall.
Excellent, well, thank you very much for all your good work there, Mr. Pentiaro.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good one, Jack.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Brown, bookkeeper position? I'm sorry, can we hold on one second? It is now six thirty, um, how about if we open up the floor for public input? Is, seeing that there is no one here from the public, um, I will close public input and we will move on to the item entitled bookkeeper.
Okay. So, I just wanted to bring the board up to date, we had advertised for the bookkeeper position, do you recall, it was a part, I had advertised it as part-time. Wanted to see what kind of activity we, we would get, um, and we re, I've received one application to date. We're at the point right now that if we re-advertise it, that process, um, it can take four to six weeks just to get through the process. Um, and I know Karen's getting, uh, she's been doing a good job trying to maintain everything, she's getting tired. And the year-end activity is approaching us real quickly. I have to believe that, um, that the part-time position, um, with the no benefits is one of the reasons why we're not getting a good response. This position has been a full-time position, it's, it's in the budget now, um, it's in the proposed two thousand eighteen budget as, um, full-time. And I'd like to have permission from the board to proceed forward with advertising the position as a full-time, um, bookkeeper. And again, if we started that process, started getting the word out, it still will take probably four to six weeks, um, before we have a final candidate selected. Which is getting us really close, uh, it'll be sometime around Thanksgiving after Thanksgiving.
Comments?
I thought it should have been put out as full-time to be in with.
Me too. I, I know, it was my, I admitted it was my mistake, but I wanted to follow the process through before I brought it back.
I, I don't even think we need a motion, do we? Cause the position posted is full-time.
Yep, no.
Consensus, as far as I'm concerned, uh, go for it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Uh, let's, let's just utilize the position.
Yes.
As best we can to make sure that it's worthy of full-time. That's it.
Um, I need to share with everyone out there. Um, the town clerk and tech, and it was on Channel Nine, and just so that everyone knows, uh, as, the more people that know, the better, there is an email scam out there. Um, and it's from, you, you may get an email from the Division of Motor Vehicles that says, um, that you have a violation and you need to send my. Do not open any emails apparently from the DMV, it is a scam. Uh, and Terry just put it out on the Litchfield Facebook, it was on Channel Nine, so we just wanted to share that with anybody who may be watching and may not have heard that. Okay. Uh, next item of business, the health insurance rates, Troy.
Okay, so, one, one item in the two thousand eighteen budget that's, uh, unfinished here, uh, at the selectmen level. And the budget committee is aware that it's, um, hasn't been acted on yet by the Board of Selectmen, was our health insurance rates. And received notice, um, last week, that our health insurance rates to interlocal trust will increase seventeen point three-nine percent in two thousand eighteen. Upon receiving that notification, um, I contacted the health trust, because I had worked with them, um, last spring and, um, pricing out different plans for the town. And even though they don't have plans, they're, um, you know, one hundred percent identical to the plan that we currently have. Uh, they had some plans that were comparable. Um, and they had some pricing that they had offered, which really was not, um, any different, um, than what we have with interlocal trust at the time. However, the rates that they, unofficially, um, they will be ratified, I guess, within the next two weeks. Um, should be about a minus six point two percent decrease. And, you know, I've been here for two years now, if you recall, last year I think we had a twenty-one percent increase, twenty-one or twenty-two. And this year, seventeen point three-nine percent increase. Um, the health trust, the way the health trust works is, you know, they have, they group all the schools, towns, any municipal eligible group, water and sewer districts. Uh, into pools, so they have a pool that's, um, fifty employees or less, they have a pool of less than one hundred. Um, and they have pools that are greater than one hundred. And by having the pools, they, they don't just experience the town, um, on its own, um, cost. The whole pool itself is rated, um, once a year. And obviously, when you have a large pool, you're, you're spreading out that cost, that liability amongst all the, um, enrollees. And it's designed to provide, um, a good, stable rate. With that being said, you know, I've known times when health trust has double-digit increases as well. We've got open enrollment that is just weeks away. And the budget committee is looking to, um, sort of wrap up the budget review process, um, as well. So, I took a look at this, the two thousand, with, if we just talk about interlocal trust, as you recall, we, we built in a ten percent rate increase into the proposed budget. That resulted in, if you benchmark against what was raised and appropriated in two thousand seventeen, that ten percent increase, uh, was forty-one thousand two forty-six. The two thousand eighteen increase at seventeen point three-nine percent. Um, would bring the total amount that would be raised at four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, now these numbers. The census is, we're using current census, census numbers, so if we hire someone in a couple of weeks, you never know if it's gonna be a family, two-person, single. So, these numbers do change constantly, but, um. We would have, so if we sign into local trust based on our current census, we'd be looking at adding another thirty-one thousand dollars to the proposed two thousand eighteen budget. If we went to health trust. We have a, a collective bargaining agreement. And it's very, there's language in there, there's very specific about, um, you know, the health plans that they have agreed to. And if we're going to change, we have the right to change, but everyone sort of needs to be in agreement that we're not, um, that the plans are comparable. The plans, i- if we were able to, uh, have the union, uh, agree to make the change, then we could probably see, um, a flat. Cost for health insurance this year, no increase, give or take a couple of thousand bucks either way. If you're not able to get the hel, the union to agree to change, and we just went to our non-union employees, then, um. Maybe we'd be looking at an increase in the two thousand eighteen budget of about twenty-five thousand dollars.
And that's still lower than the forty-one two?
That's still lower than our forty-one two that we're.
That, that we built in the budget, right, okay.
Some, I'm not an expert in health insurance, I'd have to sit down with LGC, I mean, the health trust again. Um, but, l- looking at the plan, what we're talking about with what health trust is offering, they no longer offer five dollar co, copay. So, their plan that they were quoting was either a twenty dollar or a ten dollar copay. And the RX plan, uh, a little different, not huge, but still would cost a little bit more money out of pocket for employees. The benefit is that the employees are cost-sharing this, um, premium as well. So, our employees are paying twenty percent towards the premium cost. So, by having a plan that, um, reduces their out-of-pocket monthly cost. And, you know, understanding that, yeah, if they go to the doctor, they may have to pay an extra five dollars or an extra fifteen dollars.
Maybe a wash.
It may be something that both, um, you know, that, that the union folks may actually be interested in taking a look at. This is not a plan that has a five hundred or a thousand dollar or three thousand dollar standard deductible. It's not a, you know, a plan that's eligible for a health savings account. So, I guess, all, not asking for the board right now, we have a meeting next, next Monday. What I wanted to get feedback from the board was, one. Are you, um, interested in taking, uh, you know, a closer look at this? And two, approaching the union to see if they're interested in, in having discussions about this.
Gentlemen?
I think we have to, right? We have to.
And, and I agree because, y- other than that, I think we're abrogating our responsibility to live within the tax cap, and.
Mr. Perry?
I thought last year we should have changed the insurance. And apparently I was out. I could agree.
Okay.
Yeah, we do need to approach them.
I mean, we need to approach and look for a more cost-effective way, but we also gotta be cautious of the cost shifting, right?
Right.
To your point, it, it looks like it would be not a, not a significant increase to the employees, but, you know.
And, and it may end up not being.
Right, we need to do that due diligence, we, we have to understand what, what, how it's gonna impact the high risk, the low risk, and the middle, right?
Right.
To understand what the cost is.
And cor, of course, at this point, we really have no choice.
Right.
We, we have no choice. Um, we can't sustain the seventeen point three percent.
But my understanding. My understanding, the, the reason for the increase is that our pool has had significant hits.
So, our, our pool, um.
But it's a smaller pool.
We're with interlocal trust, so we have a smaller pool, and I believe that our, so the town of Litchfield, um, we're rated based on our own activity. And then spread out a little bit over the pool with interlocal trust, but interlocal trust is a small pool.
Right.
With that being said, too.
And so, that was the key to that, John.
Whereas you go to health trust, you got a much larger pool, and I'm told we're not self-rated, and there's no component of being self-rated.
All right, that's what I was wondering, cause I, to me, well, why would they take on our burden, knowing that we're a heavy user of the service, right?
Right.
So, okay, so we're not self-rated, cool.
Okay, I think, uh, the answer is yes, Mr. Brown.
Okay, go for it. So, I'm trying to do what I can here in the next four days.
Yep, thank you.
Next four days?
Well, we're gonna meet next Monday.
Oh, for us, yeah.
So, if we get an answer. I'd like to just.
You're scared, man, like there's a budget.
Okay, um, reports on other business, uh, Troy?
All right, so, town administration report?
Yes.
Um, two thousand seventeen budget status, I wanted to talk to the board this evening, I, um. I, I don't have a report to give you, I, I hope to actually give, uh, a report next Monday night about the status of our current budget. I'm, Karen and I, in the last couple of months, we were kind of monitoring things and, and things were looking good, now you're getting closer to the end of the year. You're getting a little nervous, um, because of some of those, uh, expenses that we had that were not budgeted. And, you know, ju- just to remind everyone, we had about twenty-six thousand dollars in fire hundred rental that was not budgeted. I think the budget committee removed, they had some cuts that they removed, one being twenty-two thousand dollars from health insurance. Uh, we've had legal costs, um, for both the PFOA expenses and our ongoing abatement with Penachuck Auto Works. So, we, you know, I, I'm at the point right now where I don't have a real good handle on where we're at. Um, you know, a lot will hinge on what kind of weather we get between now and December thirty-first. Um, and I, I'd like to be able to issue to the department heads a request to they, um. Uh, you know, freeze expenditures on, um, non-essential items.
Non-discretion.
Yeah, so that we can just kind of put a hole on some things and.
I mean, discretion.
Allow me to meet with the department heads, go over their budgets, and really get a good sense, whatever the case, I know that we're gonna be coming in very tight. Um, at the same time, um, you know, I'll be reaching out to some of our contractors and asking them if they could just kind of, um, put a hole on some of the work that they're doing too, so, um.
Would it be feasible to, um, require that all purchase requests go through you from now on until the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna get involved, you know, I wanna be able to basically tell them that if we can put off the two hundred dollar, this and that, just kind of talk to me about it, and that way, at least I'm consulted as we go forward. And that's what we did a couple of years ago, so they'd come in and say, hey, I got, I got, you know, this one thing that really wanted to do, and it just, it been, it begins the, you know, that we're communicating back and forth. Um, on a weekly basis, daily basis with their budgets, so.
I think the department heads are well aware of the shortfall, the ones that we're concerned about are well aware of the shortfall, and they're doing everything they can to make sure they don't overrun their budget.
Well, the thing is, he has to make sure.
It, department heads are well aware of their budget and putting any implications stops them from being able to act to their job, and we have to seek approval. They have a budget, they know, you're already, you're, I know you've reached out to me from the IT side, you've already had conversations around.
I've, I've had verbal conversations with all of them.
There's, there's a lot of, there's already a lot of guidance being come, that's already coming out of the office around where we're gonna be and where they think they're gonna fall at the end of the year, so that Troy can estimate. What our, what our either overtures are gonna be or our, you know, our comforts is gonna be, so.
But what's, uh, what is the problem with giving him the authority if, if he finds that something is going over to act on that? On our behalf?
He already has the authority.
Not necessarily.
Any big purchases have to go through the office.
Well, through the purse.
We're talking about every.
I, I'm, I'm looking at, oh, I'm gonna, now I gotta, Troy, I gotta go buy a, a UPS, uh, can I spend the twenty-five bucks out of my budget that I already have in my budget? Because I've already projected of completing my budget in, without any overtures? That's all I'm concerned about, we have this discussion all the time, the department heads are running their department, we shouldn't have to micromanage their department, at least not until.
The, the problem is, John, I understand it, but, but Troy gets to see the big, globally, they, the department heads only are concerned about their own.
We're, we're.
And there, and there are situations where globally, we may have to cut back on everybody because one has an overage and the other one doesn't.
Well, you know, you know what I could do, I mean, we got, like I said, we, we have another meeting next Monday night, so that would give me plenty of time, talk to some of the, um, bigger departments, um, and. And, and I'll be able to give you a financial report where I think we are, where I think we're heading next Monday night. And then let's see if there's any urgency to anything.
Yeah, I think my point was, is that Troy has already reached out and.
I've been having informal conversations.
Where they're gonna fall in the end of the year. So he's already well aware in so-called departments where there either gonna be shortcomings, cause they, you know, the runway's gonna be over or they're not. I think that, I just think the dollars are already.
We have a new activity, trunk or treat?
No, just, I was approached by, um, uh, a resident, um, your former, uh, town clerk. Who's your former town clerk, forget her name. Anyhow, she, she's a member of the Lions Club, and they're, they, there's many, uh, residents, I think, down on three A, and they'd, they'd love to have trick-or-treaters, but because you know, three A's probably not a great place to let kids walk up and down the street, they'd like to come up here and, um, sponsor a trunk or treat, um.
Oh, that isn't a spelling error.
What's that? No, no, trunk or treat. And then they would park their cars here, and their kids can come and go to each car and, and get into the trick-or-treating.
That is cute, that's.
Yeah, it's a great idea. I talked with, uh, Chief O'Brien, he's all for it. And, uh, there's no activities scheduled here, there's no public meetings on October thirty-first, so I just wanna make sure you folks were fine with it, and I'll give the go-ahead.
So that would, so that'd be in addition to Halloween, right, so the normal Halloween will happen, but there is an option up here.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll be trying to promote it and get the word out to school. Just be a safe place, park the car and, and the kids can come trick-or-treating.
Another one happening on Sunday, October twenty-ninth, at, um, at, um, Dara Pond.
At Dara Pond, is that by the rec department, or is that just private?
They say it's sponsored by the rec, I don't think it is, cause we just kinda, we were trying to get the two of them to merge together, because each one alone doesn't draw a lot of kids, but together they might draw a lot. Um, but originally, the, the one that got moved, that we're, that they're asking to do at Town Hall here, was they wanted to have at Sawmill. But we kinda talked about that, it's like, there's no lights at Sawmill. You know, it's, it's very dark out there, and they wanted to have it Halloween from six to eight. So one of them, you know, the, the two different entities said, alright, well, we're gonna, we're gonna put ours at, you know, Dara Pond on Sunday during the day for little, little kids. And the Lions Club, just, they never got together, they should've got together and done something, but the Lions are doing something totally different, and having it here at Town Hall. So, so there are two different trunk or treats, not to be confused, in other words.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or are we all set?
No, okay. And then just to follow up, we had a discussion, our last meeting about, um, questioning the, who has the authority for hiring and firing. Uh, consulted with legal counsel, and, um, she has said that the board of selectmen, um, are the ones charged with hiring and firing. And the only exception to this is, um, the appointment that we have for our fire chief. The Warren article that was passed at town meeting, um, adopted RSA one fifty-four colon one. Uh, where it gives the fire chief can be appointed by the board of selectmen, uh, otherwise known as a local governing body. Um, and the firefighters are appointed by the fire chief, so. The fire chief has advised me of that, I think, a couple of times now, that he is the, uh, appointing authority, you know, and cause you have these call firefighters, it makes sense that, that come and go.
Does that mean we don't sign any appointment papers for them then?
They are, he's the appointing authority, so I think it's a courtesy notice, is that what the fire chief gives us?
No, we don't even know that.
Yeah, I think, well, sometimes we do hear about it, sometimes we do, I don't think we do all the time, but I, I've heard about it.
Never once have I been told about somebody that was being hired as a.
Fire department? Well, I'll talk to him about it, cause I, I mean, I, I think.
I thought he brought, oh, no, I know what it was, he promoted.
Promotions or things like that come through here, but.
Promotions, yeah.
I mean, this whole topic came up because we were talking about who can hire and fire out of other departments too.
Yeah, and I consulted with the police chief, I really, I figured that there would be a state law that actually, but, um, he was, he said, no, I don't have the authority to hire or fire, which is with the board of selectmen, and I know all the other departments don't have that authority, so.
Did you skip over the bond article?
Yes. Uh, so there was, good news, huh? So, um, one of the things you, I had sent around to the board, just a couple of examples of some, um, bonding costs. Uh, so I've reached out to the, the, um, New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, they're great to work with, um, you know, and, and they've given me a list of, um, people that we could, legal counsel that would serve as bond counsel. So I'm gonna work with a couple, three, four of the, of the, um, attorneys. See what their fees are, and, and be bringing that to you folks for, for selection. And then I've been advised that the normal practice is that you use bond counsel leading up to the vote. Um, and there's no charge for that. The bond counsel would waive those fees, and he, they make their money on underwriting the bond, you know, doing all the legal work necessary to, to sell the bond. Um, one of the things I had learned last week from bond counsel is that whatever we do, if, if the, if the article passes, we would, um, sell the bond in July two thousand eighteen. The first payment would not be due until February two thousand nineteen, that would be an interest payment only. And then I think it's July two thousand nineteen, you make an interest and principal payment. So, which, uh, I really wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about, I thought for sure we'd have an expense in two thousand eighteen. So I shared this, um, information with the budget committee, and they had asked for me to follow up with legal counsel to see how that impacts the tax, tax cap calculation. And, um, you know, uh, the calculation of any tax impacts, and sure enough, lawyers come back and said that if there's no money that you're raising for this bond, you're not raising appropriating any funds for two thousand eighteen, so there'd be no tax impact for eighteen. And there'd be no calculation, um, on the tax gap.
So at that point, it, the budget committee can recommend it?
She said that the budget committee would, is required, uh.
Right.
To provide a recommendation.
If there was a discussion whether or not they would even have to vote on it, if there's no financial impact for that year.
But I, but I believe, like, see, the one I had, it's, it's since there would be subsequently.
Yeah, no.
They have to, I, and I think it's a bond, they have to submit some recommendation.
Yeah, I think it just brought, it brought clarification to what they were asking.
So, I mean, I think everyone was thinking that, you know, there's gonna have this large bond number this year, it was gonna have an impact on our budget, and, um, in the tax gap. It's gonna have an impact on the taxpayers, but it would obviously occur in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, great. Any other?
Good news, bad news?
Any questions for Troy? Okay, uh, selectman reports. John?
Uh, just that we had, we've had two good, uh, budget committee sessions. Um, we're done with all our presentations, we have a break this week, and they start their voting activity, I believe, next week. I haven't seen any follow-up questions, obviously, um, I don't know if you have. I do, the last meeting, and I bring raise up my concern, the last meeting, um, got very uncomfortable for me again. Because obviously I presented the DIT budget, and there was some questions and dialogue around the value of the services I provide to the town, and the rate of the increases there. So, I went through this hell four years ago. I'm not going through this hell again, so I would like to make sure that someone in this board either defends it or doesn't, but, or, you know, Troy, I know Troy's taken some activity on it, it's just, it's uncomfortable for me.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I mean, the questions they're asking is why the increase, why, do, do, do you, do you have a value, are you doing anything for the town, I'm not collecting it and doing nothing.
Is this coming up again, John?
Yeah, they were, you know, they were basically questioning the justification for, you know, the salary that's been set. You know, so they're looking for some data, you know, and I, and I told John, I'll, John really can't be involved in.
Sure.
You know, justifying the need for the service and the cost of the service, so I've told him that I will, um, collect some data from surrounding towns and.
Four years ago?
Very comfortable knowing that the towns are paying. Didn't we, uh, we put out a request, and it was.
Fifty-four thousand dollars.
Fifty-four thousand a year, four years ago! Fifty-four thousand dollars a year is what we got for a number.
That's why the number's in the budget then.
And, and they're gonna question.
Well, they questioned why the heck we didn't just take that money and h- hire somebody.
Because we're saving it.
Again, I don't wanna give out a dialogue with them, but yeah.
We're, we're able to have someone like yourself that's got the expertise that you do, to do this at such a discounted rate. And they're gonna question that? That stuff pisses me off, it really does. Sorry you have to go through that.
I'm not going to go through it.
Um, when is that coming up?
They're, they're asking, and I think we owe them that feedback before the next meeting, so I don't know if they'll have questions during the meeting. Again, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from the whole conversation, cause it just, it, my blood pressure goes through the roof, not cause I'm, I just went through hell last.
And when is the next one?
Uh, next, not this Thursday, the following Thursday.
Which is the? Oh, there's a calendar right there. Twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-sixth. Alright, I, Troy, I'll talk with you before. I'll s- see if I can switch something, and I, I may go over there with you.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'll, I mean, I'm there to represent the board, I just, I'm not gonna represent myself, I'm not gonna get that argument again.
No, I don't blame you. Okay, um, Mr. Perry?
Okay, two things. So, the planning board had a meeting last, uh, two weeks ago, so they have another one tomorrow night. The request has been put in that they would like, well, citizens in the planning board would like to see a heritage commission. As Troy has had this conversation, he knows what I'm talking about. Basically, in a roundabout way, to come up with a demolition permit process. You need somebody to oversee it, the best way to do that is form a heritage commission. You do that so you don't have a historical society or things like that, because then they're gonna worry about buildings and.
Color of paint.
This, yeah, this is more just. This is more just a process in order to get a demolition permit, so that buildings can't be torn down without noticing the town and letting people have say, and all the historical society to go in and see if there's something that they would like out of the building to salvage, or maybe even purchase for refurbishment if it was possible, or.
Or to offer input before the demolition.
So, they would like to form a heritage commission. I can get a presentation for you, for people to come in and do that. And I was just asked to bring that forward to the board, because it would be requested that the selectman would be the one that would put it on the ballot. Because it would be a town heritage commission.
Everybody in the area has one, Merrimack, Milford, Wilton, Amherst, Peterborough, Manchester, Londonderry, all these towns have.
What do we do now, we, we've had demos happen in the town, how do they get?
It just goes through.
So it's a, I think it's an informal process, I mean, one.
We don't have a.
Kevin, Kevin issues a demolition permit. Kevin knows that if there's a building that's, um, his sto- hasn't any historical significance, he would probably make some contacts to the historic society, people in town. Um, so it's worked well, I think the concern here is that if you had a heritage commission, they could put together, uh, a demolition delay ordinance. And that way, when there's certain thing that's happens, when someone submits an application to, um, demolish a building, it's been identified as historic. All these, there's all these timeframes that are triggered, so that, you know, the heritage commission's got fifteen days to make a determination whether they want to, um, you know, meet with the owner and, and, uh, see if there's a way to salvage some of the, maybe the cupola or something, you know, um. Also, there's been times when, because of this delay ordinance, the towns have been able to work with the property owner and, and, um, work together as a team and try to save the building, relocate the building. All depends on really how important that building is to the town. But without one, you don't have the teeth, you have no, no ordinance, you have nothing to.
And, and your recommendation is?
Oh, uh, uh, there's no harm to have a heritage commission, and I think even better yet, there's less harm to have them come in. The people that would like to see it happen. And pitch to us why we should put it on the ballot.
Okay, can we set that up?
Yes, so here's problem number two. I have taken on new commitments at work, and I can no longer be available on any Tuesday outside of the last Tuesday of every month until February. So, that poses a big problem for planning board meetings on the first and third Tuesday of the month. I told you guys Tuesdays were bad for me at the beginning, I've been making them work. But I can't for this period.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement, and we will talk.
So, it just happened, so.
I understand.
It's bittersweet for me, it's, it's good for me and good for my family, it's bad because I have to renege on the commitment that I made towards them.
No, you, family and your job first. That's all, thank you, Mr. Shaffer?
Rec commission, we had, um, we got a, uh, we found a, a company that'll paint the outdoor, outside basketball courts for like nine thousand dollars. We'd originally thought it was gonna be about twenty-seven thousand.
Oh, wow.
So, um, we found those, um, and obviously the trunk or treat, we talked about that earlier, that's just about it.
Okay, um, and Troy and I again met with the superintendent of schools, the chair of the budget committee, and the, uh, chair of the school board. And we've finding, uh, these meetings are very productive in order to coordinate, um, our activities and try to see how we can help each other as we move forward. And so we are continuing these meetings, and, um, we talked about the master plan last meeting, and uh, what, uh, and how we move forward to fund items as we go forward of capital. Capital improvement items and larger items, and how we can all get together and work together.
Another, another thing that came out of that too, which, um, I still need to reach out to boards and committees and finalize it, but this, the school board and the budget committee has expressed interest in meeting in this room.
Oh, right.
Instead of the media room at the, at the high school. Now, I understand from the employees at, uh, LCTV, this would be the preferred meeting place. So, I'll be working on that to see, I gotta, there's a lot of groups that have conflicts with these meetings that the budget committee and school have. And trying to see if there's a way to work, work it around.
Do you, are you guys okay with that?
I've always said at least at the town.
You're not?
Well, you're one of the groups that.
I'm one of the groups. The, the school has done nothing but push us around, I would, I would reserve the library for our baseball meetings. They would move us wherever, I'd have to wait at the door till all of our committee members were there, and then say, alright, come on, we're going down to room three oh two, or whatever they ended up like putting us in. Last time was a dirty cafeteria with food on the table. So then I finally come over here, which is my realm, and the school's trying to take my realm away from me.
No, no. The budget committee meeting should be here and always should have been here, it's a town, it's a town voted office. So, school committee, I, I'm probably, I, I'd like to see it here, cause I think it makes simpler for you, or for the LCTV.
When is, when is the school, when do the school?
Wednesdays, and I think.
Oh, good, first, so I'm pushing the school up.
We'll work the schedule, okay, we'll work around this.
I finally find someplace I'm safe, and then you're gonna take it away from me.
Ideally, you know, here's the, this is a side solution, we have a meeting room in the back room, the only issue is we can't record, right? Well, we could, we could put one camera in there and have it record out of the central area. This way, if we have an overflow, we could vote, we could have it in that room.
Do you record, Jimmy, you, cause you're separate, you're not part of the town, it's a.
No, no, we're, we're not.
Oh, wait a minute, you're talking about the rec league?
No, he's talking about baseball.
I don't care about you, go someplace else.
Boys, boys.
You just have to hold it to three people, no, the school can go shit in their hatch.
Strike that from the record, please.
Hey, don't worry, Tony, I'll take care of it, I'll highlight it.
Big thought bubble, I don't care, that's how I feel about it.
Oh, I thought you told the rec commission, I'm going, it's a town entity, town boards should meet here, period ended.
Okay, we will move forward with scheduling, thank you. Uh, items re- no, there were no items removed from consent, Mr. Perry, you had an item you'd like to discuss.
Alright, well, it was actually Mr. Shaffer that requested this, and it's just, I remembered it, because it's, um.
I happen to know the people that were involved in the incident, so. Lance Avenue Century, I noticed that they have now painted new stop lines, and I also know that the chief should be apprised of this. And that they've also cut back the brush.
Yeah, but after the accident.
Where do we stand from that? Is that the final? Is that a temporary? Where, where do we stand? Chief, would you like to, would you like to give some input?
Is it still a safety hazard, Chief?
Uh, I, I actually went up there, looked at it, we pulled data from, um. Twenty twelve to now, there's been, uh, I wanna say two accidents at that intersection.
That's it?
That's it, one was somebody blowing through a, the stop sign.
Okay.
And the other one was the accident, uh, last month, we did go up, uh, Jack went up there, uh, Catherine went up there, I went up there. Uh, we did see some overgrown brush that was on the north end of Lance, that was of sight concern.
Yeah.
Uh, Jack went up there, cut that down, the, uh, the stop bars were back a little far. So we felt that if you put those up a little bit further, put the actual stop on the road, that would help people, you know, see that and. And it appears to be solving the problem.
So you're satisfied that it's really not any more of a safety concern than other intersection, okay. You all set?
No.
Alright.
Because we have double stop lines now.
Well, if they don't get the first one, they get the second one.
Did they erase the first ones yet?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either, I, I don't, I don't know protocol for streets.
And there is, I mean, there is code for that and I'm, I have a book on it, I'm not sure exactly what it is, I'm sure Jack is well aware where they're supposed to be.
Cause the only concern that I have is the secondary one, which is really the one that needs to be there.
The one that they stop at, yeah.
It's just a thin line and I would rather see the intersection modified, if we're not gonna add a stop sign, if we don't need to. At least to make it so that we have the one stop line that is as big and as bold as all the rest we have in town and maybe. Paint over the one that no longer needs to be there.
Yeah.
Just so that there's no confusion, we don't need to make another problem over there, I would still cut more brush back on the north side of Lance, but. I'm sure that Jack also, I mean, it looks like he went in probably two feet, three feet. And he might have had concern about how far he really could go.
Yeah.
So.
I'll, I'll talk to Jack, I, I can remember Jack kinda giving me an update on it and I thought. That they, that the police department wanted to keep the two stop bars, so. Um, but you're indicating.
Like I said, if they miss one, they'll get the other.
No, I mean, I, kind of stuck, so I'll talk to her.
If so, that's fine, I, that's, that's completely up to them and Jack, but let's make it at least the second line the same size as the first. First line is say maybe ten or twelve inches wide, the second one might be four.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a huge difference in size, so that's the only reason I said.
Well, the, the, the ironic part is, I brought up the, to, I went and saw Jack that day before the accident. And I just, I had some business at Jeff Lane and then I went back to the highway department and I said, you know, this intersection is weird, you know, I, I, I. I had somebody come through the stop sign, not, not run it, but just start to pull out as I was going along Lance. Luckily, I was doing like twenty five or so, so, I, they didn't hit me, but I beat my horn, they stopped. So, then that night that accident happened at like, you know, four, five o'clock or whatever time it was. And that's when I, you know, put out the email saying, you know, it's kind of weird how, you know, this, this whole, I noticed this situation. That weekend and then we had that accident, but I think that Jack clearing all out of the brush and he probably, you know. I think he cleared a lot, is gonna help that stop sign situation, because now people can see up the road, cause when you're, if you were heading, was it west on Century? And you stop at that first stop sign at Lance, if you look to your left, south of Lance, you can't see, you couldn't see down the road. And that's when people would start to creep out.
That was a lot better than looking north, coming the other way.
The hill and everything, yeah, yeah.
Coming the other way, I did because of your email, that night, I went around Pearson and came around Century that way.
Yeah.
And when I stopped at the stop sign, I looked and said, yeah, there's nobody's, maybe at night you'd see it because there'd be lights.
Yeah.
But by the time I got to the point where I could clearly see, I felt like I was at the road.
Yeah.
And almost in it.
Yeah.
But now that it's been cleared back, the new stop line put in, I think that's good.
It is a lot better.
And if that's gonna be our resolution, let's just bring it up to the.
I can, I can talk to Jack about widening that and maybe blacking out that obelisk.
So then you put the stop sign.
I wanna just make sure that, uh, it meets the code, cause if, you know, I have a book, it's, you know, that tells the codes and where they're supposed to be, the stop bars.
Yeah.
And just make sure we're in compliance with the state law and.
Okay.
So that we're doing it all right.
Thank you.
Perfect.
All set?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer, all set?
Thank you.
Uh, uh, one other thing, apparently, and I'm not sure because our, our. Well, no, neither, the Conservation Commission approved the, um, boat launch project.
My understanding, they have, um, supported the construction of the access road and parking area.
Okay, which was their purview?
Yeah.
My only concern is according to our legal people, we are the ones that have to initiate any lease that goes on, right?
That's correct.
Could we notify the Conservation Commission of that fact and other than, other than that? Um. That's their baby, but we should be doing the leases and we need to find out exactly how that is taken care of. So that we can comply. Okay, um, anything else, any questions or comments before we go into non-public session? Okay, uh, Mr. Brown, are you all set?
All set.
Okay, um. I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session under. Uh, RSA ninety one A colon three, section two A compensation. And we will only adjourn, we'll only come out of non-public to adjourn. So at this point, I will, um, wish everyone well tonight and thank you for tuning in. And we will see you next Monday night, our next regular meeting will be October twenty third. And, um, I guess that's it, so I will entertain a motion.
That motion is so moved.
So moved by Mr. Perry, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Brunel, roll call, Mr. Brunel.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lemire, yes, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, um, motion carries four zero zero, we are now in non-public session at seven.